So if there's nothing else, we'll move on to six unfinished business and discuss wrestling program. And I want to start out here by saying, first of all, that John Smith has asked me to move this to the bottom of the, or the end of the board meeting. We're not going to do that. We're going to talk about it right now, and then if John makes it back, he's at a wrestling meet right now, if he makes it back, we'll give him the opportunity to speak, if that's what he wants to do. So I want to start this discussion out by apologizing to everybody here who thinks that I wanted to close the program down. I don't know how that got messed up, but at the last board meeting, John and I got into a discussion about spending money on facilities, and I thought, you know, there's no reason for us to spend any money on facilities for a program that hasn't had a good attendance. And so, you know, somehow that got blown out of proportion, and people thought that I wanted to shut the program down. That's not what I want to do. I would like to see us have a lot more kids go out, but there's not a lot I can do about that. So, I think what we need to do, I will give anybody here an opportunity to talk, but, you know, obviously, we're not gonna, we can't do anything about the program tonight, whether we're gonna have it or not, because this is only a discussion item. And maybe we're just, we're not going to talk about he said, she said, we're not going to do any of that. If you guys have something that you want to say about the wrestling program, we'll listen to that. If we get into some discussion that shouldn't be discussed, I mean, we can't discuss anything about the kids that are out, we can't discuss anything about the faculty, or coaches, or anything like that. So, if anybody wants to say anything, if the board members want to say anything, go ahead.
I did talk to the rec center, and we were kind of up there since they removed some bleachers on both sides. I believe that it would be, it would be to have a dual meet there. We currently have mats there.
Is there a wrestling gym over there now?
Practice. So, which would then have, we would have some locker room space for visiting towns.
So that's an option.
And they were definitely open to having that. Maybe the rec center itself has concessions, so we'll work that out with another group or whatever, but.
Yeah, for right now, for right now, the wrestling meets are going to be housed in Lafayette for next year. And we made that decision at the last board meeting, so. But that is, that is a good option, so.
What is the floor space on, for that rec center gym? Because we're going to have a double duel there, that we could run into the same problems.
Yeah.
If you're gonna put two mats there, you got, you have to make sure you're not wall-to-wall, or you still can follow that.
Yeah, because it's, what, 10 feet?
It's gotta be 10 feet to the bleachers, from the end of the mat, and then it should be five feet, you gotta make sure you have your five-feet mat safety space from the end of the circle to the end of the mat. It has to be five feet, and that's where Bestie's been adamant that that has to be followed.
Okay, can you give me those dimensions real quick, because I go there a lot? But I, from what we kind of, it wasn't?
It will work.
So you?
You don't have enough parking space, you don't have bleacher space, it's not, you won't have near enough parking or space for all the people. Because if you go to Alllake to a meet, you'll see that the visitor side is pretty close to full, and they spill over to the home side, and those are pretty full. There's not near enough bleacher space at the rec center for it to be sufficient.
And you gotta think, where the buses are gonna park, and?
Parking, and there's absolutely no parking, it would not work.
Okay, so I, you know, I think this is a great conversation, but I don't think this is a conversation that we need to have in this board meeting tonight. I mean, we can discuss the rec center another time, but, like I said, for now, next year, obviously, unless it changes, but for next year, it's going to be in Lafayette. So, if we want to bring up the rec center again, we can do that at another time. I mean, we don't have any, we don't have any measurements, and we don't have any other information, so I think that that's a discussion that we should have at a different time, so. Does anybody else have anything that they want to say?
I do, as a parent that has this, and excuse me if I get emotional, but that's just who I am. And I wrote my, I just wrote it down, because I want to, I don't want to get my brain to get ahead of my mouth. Wrestling is a hard sport. To compete at this sport means hours spent in a hot wrestling room, sweating, running, and building strength. It means hours spent lifting weights and doing push-ups and sit-ups. Wrestlers have to watch what they eat to maintain weight or to make weight. Then after hours of practice, they get six minutes on the mat to prove if their hard work paid off against one opponent. Sometimes you are the victor, and sometimes you weren't fast enough or strong enough, and you go back to the wrestling room to train harder. But it is a beautiful sport, too. It teaches an athlete that hard work and dedication do pay off. It teaches you how to be a gracious winner, but also a gracious loser. It teaches the athlete to set goals and to work towards those goals, whether it is making a certain weight, beating a certain opponent, or making that medal stand in a tournament or at stage. Wrestling is hard, so not very many do it, but my son does. Most successful programs in the area have a youth program or feeder program. Tyson White and John Heimer have started to build a youth program. They sure they had about 60 kids. I was at a recent tournament in Rockwell City where we had 15 or 20 young wrestlers competed, and they did quite well. We had three middle school wrestlers advanced at AAV State last weekend. There is a future coming. Right now, East Sac does not have a strong history in the sport of wrestling, and the sport does not get much support or participation. I would like to commend John Smith for trying to build a program. I hear stories of him cruising the lunchroom at the high school and middle school, trying to convince kids to give it a try. But even for all his efforts, the program continues to flounder. As Chris reads our mission statement, there's another part to that mission statement that says, "We live this mission by focusing decisions and planning on what appears to be two very simple, straightforward questions. Is this in the best interest of our students, and will this help our students learn and grow?" And know that I was in the group that designed that mission statement, and as a staff member at East Sac, I tried very hard to live that mission statement in my classroom. All I'm asking is that we, as a district, live that mission statement in wrestling as well. Is a program where three or four wrestlers are on a team, where we have difficulty getting teams to wrestle against us, where the athletes struggle to improve skills and grow in the sport in the best interest of our kids? I've heard stories where there's only one wrestler at practice. In order to become better at wrestling, you have to have someone to practice with. You have to learn the moves and have someone teach you moves and counter-moves. I've heard that there are some more boys that are interested in going out. I'm hoping that we can have a program that will build, and I read an article about Trainer Iowa where, similar to ours, didn't have much of a program, brought in some new staff, and now it's thriving, and the boys are winning more. This is what I'm hoping for East Sac. Keeping a current program as is because a few people want to wrestle, I don't believe is the best interest. Providing a program where kids want to be there, where they can grow in their skills, where they can feel proud of their accomplishments and then walk off the mat is in their best interest. I don't think our current program provides that, not sure what the reason is. Might be coaching staff, might be we just don't have enough interest. But I would ask that you consider making changes so that my son and some others with him that want to compete have a chance. We've made policies and decisions before, and those are in programs that have successful and adequate participation. We're just asking that wrestling gets the same consideration to become more of a competitive sport.
Thank you for reading that, Sandy. I don't, I'm not sure what to take out of it, though. I mean, you said an awful lot of things in there. Some of them I don't quite understand.
I think that we're trying to build a, the part where she said that we, that it's kind of up and coming, that we have, how many, 60 in our youth program? How can we support that, can we? What can we do? You said it before about, you know, it's gonna take a bit, how many years to really establish, because this has been an ongoing battle since you were at high school, that wrestling just wasn't something. So, what can we do to get behind a sport that can be really successful and really can do a lot for the students? What can we do as a district to hope to support that?
I mean, I think the best thing that we can do is offer the programs that we're offering, but here's one of the problems. We have Tyson White and John Heimer, who also have young kids, you know, so they can't spend as much time as they probably would like to, or they did when they were younger, when they were wrestling. I mean, it takes a lot of time, and it takes a lot of effort, and it takes a lot of volunteers. And for me to sit here and say that I know how to, I know how to fix that, I can't do it.
I think the main thing is support. Because you hear a lot of people, like, they have to make weight, there's a, there's so many uneducated people with making weight. They think, oh, you have to cut five pounds, you can't eat, you can't drink. That's not the case. The case is, you have to maintain, you have to have discipline, and you get down gradually. There's a law, there's a law mandating how much weight you can lose a week. You can't just lose 10 pounds in a day. And these kids put, the kids that are out do put a lot of work in, and they, other kids don't want to put that much work in. They're kids in the weight room that watch, that don't, that see how much work's going in. They don't want to put that work into it. They understand that if I go out for wrestling, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to dedicate myself to it. A lot of people aren't.
And I don't think you can make a kid.
You know, you can't, the kid has to want to do it. And with the, with the up and coming, the kids come, up and coming, Tyson and John and Brad Ashinger are doing a great job down there. They have a lot of volunteers, a lot of, a lot of kids, they're very excited. When you go there on a Tuesday night, you have fun watching.
I know John and Ben were at Burnside with the junior high, which, that's where I was earlier, and I give great credit to John for saving wrestling essentially when the previous coach stepped down. There wasn't a serious search to find a coach. Wrestling was pretty much gonna let go away, and John took over and stepped up and took it. Knowing, John's never wrestled, he doesn't have much experience with coaching. What he knows, he's learned over the last couple of years. But there's, we all want the same thing as parents of these kids that are wrestling. We want a competitive program. It's not enough to say we have wrestling, and that's the attitude that's in this community. There's no way that the football program, the basketball program would be allowed to have gone down to the point where wrestling is right now. They would not allow them to be non-competitive. I speak to all the coaches in the other districts and that. There's no fear to wrestling, and wrestling isn't one of the most difficult sports there is. It takes serious, serious intestinal fortitude to go out on a mat for six minutes by yourself with no one else. My son's been doing it for 10 years. I mean, there's other kids below him that are giving it the same. I mean, I give John great credit, and I don't like the bad-mouthing, I always give credit when I speak about him, that he's, what he's done, and he's not here to defend himself. But the simple fact is, I've spoke to eighth graders, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, there are other kids that would love to go out for wrestling, but his personality has pushed him away.
All right.
And I, I say that, there are kids there, there's interest at the lower level.
We don't want to hear it anymore.
No, that's fine, I'm not even saying anything more about it, but the fact is, we need to have a competitive program. Because I, as a parent, and other parents, we shouldn't have to make the decision for our children, that they have to decide to think about open enrollment to have an opportunity to be successful. When they've been with all their classmates since the beginning, that shouldn't be.
That's enough. You can sit down now, thank you. Does anybody else have anything they want to say? Connie, go ahead.
They do have 14 junior high wrestlers this year. I think they just added another one this week. And I also think that putting the wrestling matches and the meets themselves in Lafayette in the bigger gym, the opening, I don't know, it just seems like it's a little bit more welcoming to other teams. I think it gives some kind of, I don't even know what the word, just, it looks better, feels better. I think just to give a little more visuality to the school maybe will help, so. I know we appreciate that that's gonna take place next year, and I'm not, I guess I'm just not sure why we're still looking for another place when that one seems to fit all of the criteria. So maybe you could answer that, I don't know why we're still looking since that, I mean, you see what's happening.
It was just an option. I didn't know a whole lot about it, though, it was just, I was trying to find ways to help. I mean, the mats were there, I saw Ben, John both there at the last board meeting that I was at for the rec center board. And we're always, as a board member at the rec center as well, we're always looking for ways to get people in there. And if they offered that for free and it was easier, then we talked about putting it in the gym, and what that was gonna take, and if we really wanted to do that, to have to do it the night before and tape the mats down when they were sold. It was, it was just an option, it was just, so, thank you.
I know, I know we were stated that, that we weren't, that we weren't gonna attack faculty, or, and I'd like to know that on the record, that that wasn't supposed to be, that wasn't supposed to happen today. And the guy that's not defending, that's not here to even defend himself, is getting talked about in a meeting that we're not supposed to talk about faculty, or wrestlers or anything else like that. We're supposed to talk about the program as a whole. That's why I'd like to just, just be on the record.
Thank you. Yeah, does anybody else have anything else to say?
I do, sorry.
Go ahead.
As a former wrestler, you know, graduated 2011, so I'm not too far from the program to kind of see what's going on. And I'm out a lot talking to people, and the one thing that ever gets brought up is competitive, and how competitive are we, and how productive are we? And the one thing I always like to bring up is, you know, there's never been a real good basis like there is today now. So, you know, I never did it as a kid when I was a sophomore. Wasn't very good, didn't understand the sport, turned around and 60 wins. A teammate went out as a sophomore, ended up making the state. Another teammate, when I was a sophomore, won around 50 matches in two years. This is what worked. I see that in that rapid growth in two to three years for all these guys, and now I see young kids being motivated and wanting to go out. You know, 14 kids on a junior high team, 14 kids, that's a complete team, with some extras, and you can put a team together and be really, really competitive. Now we have a trend of rapid growth and getting very competitive very fast in a short time with kids that are going to be there at a young age to be able to start and be able to grow. And I think it's, it's great to see that, and then once you know the program, and know the kids, and know the success that they've had in these short bursts, it really shows the potential to be very competitive and very good to watch. It's just, I feel there's a lot of misinformation, people might know, not know, and they just read the paper, you know, just don't actually know what the program, but once somebody explains it to them, you can see, you know, I see where it comes from. You know, maybe you're right, maybe I shouldn't go watch a match, you know, and see these younger kids kind of progress as athletes and as people.
I appreciate everybody coming here and everybody talking about the program. I mean, honestly, guys, we're talking about something that could be talked about out on the street. You guys could be discussing this among yourselves, we don't need to, we don't need to be saying this stuff in a board meeting. I mean, and obviously, it's getting a little out of hand in places. So, I mean, unless you have, unless somebody has some way that we can make the program better, which I don't understand, I mean, I don't understand how you can do that. You can't just say, "Yep, we're gonna make it better," because the kids have to want to go out. You can't make a kid go out for wrestling. Obviously, it's a very difficult sport. There's just two people out on the mat. You don't have a buddy to pass the ball to. So, we're not gonna, we're not gonna discontinue the program, we're gonna continue to have the program. And, I mean, like I said, we can't talk about staff, we can't talk about the kids, so.
I got a couple that I could say, you know, it's gonna work or not, but.
Yeah.
You talk about support, what the, what the school board can do, you know, obviously, we can't make a kid cut weight, can't do it. But there are things maybe we can do. We changed the location for legal reasons, it's gonna happen next year. Staffing, I'm not gonna talk about specific staff, but if we're worried about the program going away or something, you know, we, this school has thrown money at problems before, issues before. If we want to hire another staff for a year or two to see if it works, to see what this wrestling position, or what this wrestling tradition can start as, or be, I would be afraid of spending a little bit more money on staffing, whatever that would look like, I don't have an idea, but I'm just saying, maybe another coach or something. We could do something as a board, you start talking about, maybe a slippery slope, but free attendance for meets, maybe free concessions for some meets, things like that, that we could try to get some people involved in the community, other than just parents. I mean, those are things that probably the board can okay. I'm not saying that we're gonna okay them tonight because I can't, but it's ideas that I don't want to sit back and say, I don't want the wrestling thing to happen, or tradition hasn't really even started yet, I guess, in my opinion. We need to start something new, if that's what you guys want. I'd like to try a little bit more before it goes by the wayside, or people act like the board didn't try. Those are just a couple ideas I came up with thinking about this, so. We might have to talk about it forever. The location's already been decided for next year. Staffing would be an issue as far as hiring another coach as an idea, or an additional coach. The other things is free attendance and concessions, they're just things to get people in the, you know, with grandparents there, because they're, just ideas that we, as a board, could probably be something about.
I think those are good ideas.
And there's probably a lot more, but I'm just saying, it's gotta start somewhere, now that it hasn't been here before, but we could look at those things, I guess.
I don't know enough about wrestling to take my extra time and go out and try to figure out ways. I have all girls, you know what I mean? So I guess my thing, you say that we can't sit here and, and go all alone, as we could talk about this out on the street, is right. I would say for parents and wrestlers to bring something to the board that we can vote on, to, you know, to get together, come up with some ideas for us and bring that, so that we're not just doing this. Because I certainly don't want to see it go, and I would love, I would definitely entertain, you know, ideas.
I came from, I'm old, okay? So I just acknowledge that first, but I came from a high school that had a wrestling tradition, and still does, in northeastern Iowa. And when people have talked about, you know, but we wouldn't let football fall apart, or we wouldn't let basketball fall apart, and I was trying to sit there thinking, but what would we ever do to push it, or to inspire it, or whatever? And then trying to think back to the high school that I came from, who still has a strong wrestling tradition. And I, I enjoy wrestling meets because I grew up with a brother that was a wrestler, and friends of mine in high school wrestled, and I'm trying to think, so what was it about it that made it roll and keep going? And frankly, I think it happened so long before I was over in high school, that it just, there were just kids that said, "I'm not playing basketball, I'm gonna be a wrestler." And we've gotta get ourselves, it's almost like we gotta climb the mountain to get to that point where it can kind of sustain itself, and I don't know what that is. I also think I remember that quite a long time ago, and it might have been just while at the Auburn, that we had fairly good numbers of wrestlers. Because I remember my husband and I going to wrestling meets at Low Lake, and they're doing their, like, the boys were in high school. And I think there, it felt at that time like it had some momentum going. And then, just like other things, classes that kids take during the school day that are elected, how do, how do we ever figure out what they take and what they don't take? But I don't know that I have any suggestions. Brent's ideas are probably as, as good as we're gonna hear tonight about things that we can do. You know, we're not in a position to sponsor the little kids wrestling program, but whatever we're not doing that it would take to keep these middle school kids out, because actually, Connie, I thought there were 15 kids out, so maybe the numbers will get bigger through the night here. But.
If we can get those 15 kids to stay in and wrestle.
Yeah. Yeah.
And some are seventh grade, you know?
Yeah. And the other piece of, maybe, and it's not speaking, it's just saying, maybe we do need more help, and maybe we need that variety of personalities. I don't know what it is, but I do, I do think it's hard to get going, and I think it kind of maintains itself within that tradition, but.
But I would add something that's an encouraging sign. Having grown up also in a wrestling community, and what does it take to build a program? Marianne gets credit for going out as a sophomore. Wrestling is probably one of the most humbling sports, it's mono-e mono. And it has to start, I mean, there's a good sign right here, 60 young kids are starting wrestling. That's really where programs are built. You talk to any guys that wrestle at high school, or you talk to a guy that wrestled at URS Devine, where did it start? "I was this tall when I entered on the mat," you know? And I think when you've got some passionate parents, and it sounds like Tyson White and John Heimer are passionate about it, that's where you start building your ranks, and getting those young kids exposed to it. Because, like I said, once kids get exposed to it, now they've gotten out of, yes, this is a sport for me, or no, it's not a sport for me. You know, and I think that's where you start building. It's encouraging to hear we've got 60 young kids willing to give, willing to give this sport, which is a very demanding sport, a try. And I think that's, that's where you continue to kind of push those younger ranks, then they'll work themselves, and you're gonna lose kids. I mean, I don't care what sport it is, be it, you know, basketball, football, and those little ranks, everybody goes out for everything, you know? But then they kind of weed themselves out, as they move their way from middle school to high school. You're gonna lose some, but you're always trying to encourage, you know, 15 kids at the middle school ranks, the seventh, eighth grade, that's a start. But really, 60 kids is where you want to hone your, hone your, your time and your efforts on.
We're also three years removed from having four district qualifiers and one state qualifier, which is the best that East Sac's done in a long, long time. And we've had a rough couple of years, but there has been success, and there will be success again. It just, we're not, it's not like there hasn't been any success whatsoever, but we've had state qualifiers, we've had state place winners, we've had district qualifiers, it's just, there is, there has been success. It's not like we're building from, from nothing.
You're the assistant coach, right?
Co-head coach.
Co-head coach.
Or assistant, whatever you want.
Yeah. Would, would another?
Coach Allen.
Coach, yeah. Would another staff member help, do you think, or?
I don't, I'd have to talk with John, but I, I don't know if it could hurt or not, but I, but I don't think that's the main problem, is, the problem is the numbers. If we could have someone that's in school, on our staff, that would be great, because they could talk to the kids constantly. And tell them, "Hey, you should be out for wrestling," that someone you see every day, that you have to go to their class and everything else, that could help them.
That goes back to, you can't make a kid go out.
No.
And, okay, guys, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to cut this short.
I have a quick suggestion I asked last year, Mr. O'Housen directed me to Telly. You know, it's too late this year to make it happen, but I asked last year, why is there not a home junior high meet? There wasn't one last year, the one wasn't this year, or hasn't been in the past. I mean, majority of your kids in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, their version, their interpretation of wrestling is a chair and jumping off a rope, or what you see on Friday night on TV, it's not folk-style wrestling. I mean, I think a lot of, if we were to have a home meet and encourage the kids in the junior high, even the sixth grade, fifth grade, "Come watch, come see a meet." I mean, a lot of kids, if they see folk-style wrestling, they're gonna think, "I can do that." I mean, wrestling grows by exposure. It's too late this year, maybe it's a possibility next year. Maybe schedule the meet the day after the high school meet, so the mats are already in place, there's no having to reset them up twice. I mean, it would take some work to get it done next year, and maybe not even next year, but for it to grow, it has to be exposed. I mean, the rule of thumb, they say, is that once a kid gets past fourth grade, fifth grade, they get to basketball age, they go towards the easier sport. Because the former superintendent for Old Oak, OABCIG, she asked me, "How can we get our middle school numbers to grow?" And my answer to her was, "How are your basketball numbers?" She goes, "They're very high." I said, "They're always gonna be higher than that, your wrestling numbers." I says, "'Cause once they hit the age where they can go choose the sport, they tend to go to the one that's a little easier." But I think if we were to have a home junior high meet, it would expose the kids, and maybe put it on the announcement, "Hey, come see the wrestling." Let kids see this, be exposed to it, I think it would help grow the numbers. And the youth program, what's going on, we're not gonna see anything from that for four to five years, when they, when they roll into the high school, but there is interest at the lower level. If we were to get interest and exposure to the junior high, it would help.
And those are the numbers that we're talking about, 14, 15, that we want to grow, and at least maintain that, I think that that's a great idea. I think exposure is, is part of it. I think if it was here, I would go.
At Burnside tonight, there's 102 matches.
Do we host any, and I know this isn't within the district, but do we host any youth tournaments? Like the little kids, anywhere near here?
Rockwell or North.
Driving out for practice. When, you know, first of all, a few years ago, before there was Mr. Heimer and Mr. White, John did hold tournaments for all the little kids. He's the one really that started the little rub rats, or whatever you want to call them. And they, they had a great turnout for that, and they did that in Low Lake also. They have little tournaments for, at the end of the season, so to speak, for the little ones. That could still be done this year, to expose kids, I would think, because I think they're still in practice, are they not?
I think they were done last, we could go there.
I think they were done last year.
Yeah, go ahead. I need to mark a couple, I'm pretty new to the Sac City area, we've been here for about five years. I've got about forty-plus years in the wrestling community as a coach, as a wrestler, and when I, I've seen good programs, I've seen bad programs, and go from where we're at up to a successful. We're doing the right thing as far as, I'm glad, first thing I wanna say, I'm glad for you, you're not getting rid of wrestling. That's probably why I'm here, the only reason I'm here tonight. But when we hit the middle school area and the high school area, it becomes more involvement than just this coach or the other coach. It's got to be your football coach, it's got to be your basketball coach, it's got to be your gym teachers. Because that, everything you learn in wrestling transforms over to those other sports. I've never seen a successful wrestling program that didn't have a football coach saying, hey, lineman, you need to go learn how to wrestle. Never seen one. I've been to the middle school program here, I've helped out with the middle school program over here at the Rec Center. Your wrestling mats over there are bad. I know they said they've got some, I've heard rumors they're gonna move some from somewhere else. You got a safety issue with those wrestling mats, so. The money, if you're gonna put money into mats, whatnot, that might be the case. That's something that you can do over time, it's a long-term concern. You need to augment your coaching staff, whether it be through volunteer at the middle school and the high school. You know, I'm not saying you need to change anything, but you need to augment it. Meaning that you gotta bring in somebody who's got a history in wrestling, a background, and knows how to relay that to the kids. Because there's nothing more contagious than winning. Winning is the only thing that makes winning happen. If I come to a wrestling meet and all I see is four kids standing out there, and I know we can't make them go out, I got that. Nobody's gonna go out there with them. So that football coach needs to send his lineman out there and say, give it a try. Now, you can't make a football coach do that either, which we suggest, but. As a community, we gotta come together, and you're exactly right, it's something we have to talk about on the street, through whatever, voice, social media, whatever, you gotta get that word out. But you need to augment your coaches, you need to update some of your equipment, okay? Facilities are fine, Lakeview is a fine facility, it's much better than Lake ever was. You gotta get some home meets, because you gotta get your exposure. And that's something that your athletic director's gonna have to take care of. But without the exposure, without the communication, talking, without a little bit of extra money being put in, selling coaches and equipment, we're gonna be right back here asking, when are you gonna cancel our program? I've got a young sixth grader who's one of those three at Lake State, and he's looking forward to it. He said, Dad, I don't wanna go anywhere. I got up this morning, I said to my wife, I said, you know what, I don't think I'm gonna go to that school meeting, because I don't think it's gonna go too good. And she related to me, she said, that my son said, if you don't go there tonight, I'm not gonna have a program for wrestling, so get in there.
Well, I'm actually glad you came, because what you just said right there was more information than everybody else. Not that what everybody else said was not good, but that was more information to me than what everybody else said, we should do this, we should do that. I like that, I really do. Thank you for saying that, and, you know, honestly, guys, we could sit here again, we could sit here all night and talk about we should do this, or we should do that. We need, we need to discuss this stuff in the public. So, but, one thing that I do wanna say is, this is great. This is the first step, we're talking about it, okay? We need to talk about it, we need to get people involved, we need to, we need to get coaches involved, we need to get volunteers involved, we need to get the kids involved, okay? We can't do that by myself going up to a kid who I don't know and saying, hey, you should go wrestle. He doesn't care what I say. You know, we need to get the parents involved, we need to get, and that'll get the kids involved. So, thank you, everybody, for coming, thank you, everybody, for offering your suggestions. And I'm sure this is something that we'll see you talk about as a board. So, let's move on.